Select Board. As a preliminary matter, this is Kevin Calcutta, Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Anita Mecklenburg?
Here.
Cece Van Tyne?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Blake Robinson? Blake, can you hear us or no?
Here.
Thank you. Judith Lozardi?
Here.
Thank you. This meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020.
If you can hear me, Kevin, I just played with my speaker and I can't hear anything, so I'm gonna have to leave the meeting and come back.
Okay, can everybody else hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For right now, that's the most important thing. So, Lucy, where did I leave off? Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows for public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. And as always, this meeting is being recorded and streamed, so as such, if you are joining via video, please make sure not to screen share. We are not able to take that back. All that being said, Blake, can you hear us now?
I can. I picked the exactly wrong time to play with my settings on my sound on my computer, so I'm back on another device. Sorry about that.
No worries. If you would have mind, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Of course. So I've got COVID-19 updates followed by public comment. The action items tonight include approval of two conservation restrictions. The consider approval of a request by the Norfolk Community League to install a free public library on Town Hill. To consider an award of a contract to Constellation Energy for the purchase of electricity for all town buildings. To consider naming the new street in Lakeland Hills subdivision. To consider additional dates for Zealous Beer Company for pop-up beer and food events on Town Hill. And to consider disbanding the zoning working committee. The discussion items tonight include discussing amending the fees for liquor license renewals for calendar year 2021 for on-premise establishments. To discuss a presentation regarding the police station project. Posting of webs to the website of board correspondence and town minister updates. There are four warrants to approve and one set of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blake. For our first item this evening, would you mind taking us through our COVID-19 updates?
Of course. Unfortunately, tonight, my updates are a little different than they have been because we learned today from our public health nurse that the number of cases in Norfolk has risen dramatically. If you follow our postings to the website every Monday and Thursday, you would have seen 52 cases last Thursday. And today, when I update it, now says there is 129 total cases in Norfolk, with 83 being active. We're not provided, as you all know, with the details of these, but it's been fairly widely shared already today through various mediums that there is a situation at MCI Norfolk Prison. And we believe that a majority of the new cases are from there. So, and we expect, based on what I learned today, that there's, they're following their protocols and their plan that they have in place. That includes more testing of people who, inmates and staff, and so I wouldn't be surprised if our numbers are higher when we report again on Thursday, just so people are aware it's coming. Our cases have risen a little bit in the resident population outside of the prison. But when I talked to the nurse about that late last week, she thought that was tracking more towards what we're seeing in the Commonwealth overall. There are some new cases among residents, but the majority really, I believe, is at the prison. So that is somewhat a contained situation. I know that the fire chief has been in very close contact with them about their plans and what they're doing, and he's confident that they have it under control as well. So a fairly big change for us. We've been in the white zone for many, many weeks, and unfortunately, because they report all the cases together, I expect that we will end up in the red zone when that's next updated by the state. So that's unfortunately what I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Blake. And if you would have mind, would you just outline for everybody what it would mean for us to be designated as an at-risk or a high-risk community?
So I need to go back and actually review the protocols myself, but if we go into the red zone, then there are, there's some aspects of the governor's plan that we have to step back from. That's what I just need to remind myself about. But I'm gonna work on a website posting for tomorrow morning, and we'll make sure we update it then. And then depending on how long we stay in the red zone, you know, will dictate when, if activities have to be scaled back when they can reopen. But I found it interesting in the governor's update today, this afternoon, that he was very clear that he did not see. The data wasn't showing spread in schools or in restaurants. That's not where people were, you know, contracting this, the disease, so that they weren't playing, other than the changes you make to, in requiring certain businesses to close a little earlier and people to, you know, stay-at-home advisory from 10:00 PM on to 5:00 AM. Schools aren't changing. Restaurants can still operate, just have to close a little earlier, perhaps.
Yeah, and I think that restaurants are still able to do takeout, it's that they can't serve people inside after a certain time. So there is still that flexibility, which is good.
Right.
I'll toss it around to the rest of the board for any questions they have for Blake related to her COVID-19 updates, starting with not Anita. That's a head shake. No, Cece?
Just briefly, Blake, do you expect, now, my recollection was that not too long ago, maybe sometime, maybe early September, I'm not entirely sure. It was, I was gonna say this summer, but school had already gone back, that Rantham went into the red zone in, obviously not the same situation, but a substantially similar situation, which is to say that the majority of the cases, the, really the issue, the hot zone, if you will, was a population that was not mingling with the general population. In that case, it was an assisted living. I think it was actually beyond, I think it was a full, true nursing home. These were not people that were going to escape and go and mingle with kids who were in schools, which had been the concern, that they KP or the elementary schools would get shut down because they were in a red zone, and they were able to manage that. I think there was some, it was touch and go for a minute, but, so do you anticipate that the reaction will be somewhat similar in as much as the population in question is not necessarily coming in contact with the greater population?
I think you've described it very well. I think that's exactly the situation, Cece.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open it up to anybody who's joining us in attendance this evening for any questions related to our COVID-19 updates. If you have any questions, we ask you, please use the raise hand button located at the bottom toolbar under participants. I see we have a hand up. Mr. Haddad, go right ahead. If you would have mind just stating your name and your address before you share. Thank you.
Ed Haddad, 138 Red Maple Run. I just want to clarify what the question that Cece just asked, Blake, is that if there is a surgeon, as she described, in the prison population, are we sure that that will not affect our normal population activities, restaurants, schools, whatever, in a negative way going forward? I'm not quite sure I understood your answer, Blake. I'm sorry.
So because the prison population is contained, because it's a prison, we understand that the, any of those inmates who have been tested positive are gonna be quarantining within the prison. They're not leaving, or not being transported to another facility. Because we don't have data, and we're not provided with data on how many cases are inmates and how many cases might be staff, and you know, that's one thing I can't answer, but if it was a staff person that tested positive, their number would report to the town they live in, not the town of Norfolk. And I'm confident that the prison would make sure that their staff understood the quarantine responsibilities if that were the case. So I don't expect it will have an impact on our schools or our residents, because the population is not one that's gonna be out in the community generally.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. We have another hand raised. Go right ahead, Donna.
Hello, Donna Jones, North Street. I believe other towns with facilities that raised the number, their town got listed with an asterisk, meaning the asterisk is indicating it's an institute of some time, like a nursing home. Wondered if we could possibly get into that asterisk category.
I would likely think that we will. I just, those reports seem to lag a little bit from what we got today. So as soon as we know, we'll pass that along.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have any other questions for COVID-19? A quick reminder, if you are not on mute, please be on mute until you are called to speak, so we reduce the background noise. I am not seeing any other hands unless Mr. Haddad, did you have a follow-up question or just haven't put your hand down? Hand down, got it. Thank you. That means we can go ahead and move on to our next item this evening, which is our public comment period. For those who are in attendance, this is the point of the meeting where you will be given around three minutes to share with the board and town administrator any items that fall under our purview. We do ask that before you speak, you just state your name and your address, and make sure that it stays respectful, if you'd be so kind. That being said, do we have anybody who would like to share this evening for public comment? If so, please use the raise hand function. Donna Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you very much.
Donna, you went back on mute. Not sure if you meant to do-
Okay. Let's try that again. All set now, Kevin?
You're good. Go right ahead.
Okay. On tonight's agenda, there's possibly accepting a conservation restriction on the, related to the enclave development, where it says property off of Village Green. Just wondered if the street could be named before that conservation restriction sign. Another topic is, has the closing of Norwood Hospital at the end of June due to flooding affected our fire department? Such as how long they're away from the station, when they have to go to other hospitals, and how do they restock their supply? So at a future update during a meeting or your new TV show, I'd appreciate an update on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Blake, anything that you'd like to add at this point?
I can answer part of Donna's question regarding the fire department. So we still have the same medical control doctor who works, is related to Norwood Hospital, which is helpful, but depending on the situation, we'll go to a different hospital. I'd say generally, the go-to hospital is gonna be Milford Regional, in Milford. But depending on the circumstances, we might go to another place. Stocking of supplies isn't necessarily done at the hospital. We order supplies directly, may receive them from the hospital as well. So I don't, I haven't understood from the chief if there's any concern with that. And in terms of timing, as you know, we have two ambulances, so while we do have, you know, a number of occasions where there's more than one call at a time, we also have mutual aid. So if our two ambulances are out, then the protocol will be followed by the MECC to make sure that the next available ambulance will come to from the closest place as possible, who can get there the quickest to respond to the next emergency. So I'm sure we can get you some stats on that, but overall, that's generally how we handle those things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blake. Do we have anybody else who would like to share for public comment this evening? If you are having trouble finding the raise hand function, just wave your hand furiously at your camera and we'll call on you. There we go. Go right ahead, Paul. You've gotta take yourself off mute.
Better?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Paul Denver from 16 Winterberry, and I apologize, I couldn't get the audio for a while, so I don't know what you've discussed. I just have two things to say, and I don't know if one of them is really appropriate, but number one, I want to commend the Select Board for the hearing that you held on the dog issue in September. I actually read the entire minutes or transcript of that, and I thought you did a fair and thorough job on that hearing, and I think you're to be commended, and I don't know how many times people commend you for your conduct, but I thought that was very good, really good. My other comment, and I don't know if it's appropriate, because I know that the presentation regarding the police station construction is on the agenda, but I, and I don't necessarily want to stay around for that agenda item necessarily, but I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I've looked at your list of items to discuss at the presentation when you reach it. I know you're scheduling it tonight. And I would just, if you would indulge me for one second, just to say that I think it's important to discuss who hired the project manager and who hired the architect, both of whom did not do adequate jobs from my perspective. And I think it's important, so I think it's important to discuss the hiring of powers or authority of the building committee membership at that time, and whether, and how that happened. That's an important thing for me. Second thing is, I hope that you will discuss, among lessons learned, the possibility of having a, some type of permanent building committee to prevent some of the things that happened from happening again, so that the people in the town can trust the process and perhaps approve the spending that's necessary for a project that has to get done. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denver, and we appreciate the kind words associated to a very difficult hearing that we went through for a few months, actually. As it relates to our police station presentation, yes, we will be scheduling that tonight, and thank you for your notes there. We did take note of your notes related to the content of that presentation. But one thing I will throw out there is that we already have determined that we will be appointing and putting together a permanent building committee once we get past the closing of the police station project, leading up to our discussions related to a fire station project. That is something the board determined, I believe, back in the early spring, late spring. So that is something that is on the docket.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment this evening? If so, please use the raise hand function, wave furiously at your camera, do whatever you can just to let us know you want to talk. I am cycling through our video attendees and seeing no hands, so we'll be moving on to our next agenda item this evening, to please consider approval of two conservation restrictions. Blake, go right ahead, please.
Sure. So joining us at the meeting tonight is Rich McCarthy. Rich, as town planner, is here to lead the board through these two restrictions. There's quite a process to approve a conservation restriction in any community that starts with a project being, in this case, a project being proposed, a decision that some property will be restricted. There's a state process and it's actually state approval that's required for a conservation restriction to be put in place, and the final step is the Select Board to sign off on it, because in this case, this is private property, that the restriction will be held by the town and managed by the Conservation Commission. So I know that Rich knows even more about it than I do, so I'll turn it over to him, but in your packet is a quick overview of these two, as well as a couple others that you'll be hearing about in coming months or so. He's got two very short presentations that you can put on the screen and help orient you to these particular ones, and then answer any questions that you have about the actual restrictions. So with that, I will turn it over to Rich.
Great, thank you. Will you give me a, do the screen share, Kevin, so I can put the presentation up as I go through it?
Rich, for some reason, I don't have the ability to give you presentation capabilities.
All right. Well, we'll, we can proceed as if I had that ability, well, improvise. So the first one that is on the agenda is 65 Myrtle Street. 65 Myrtle Street Conservation Restriction came about when the property that was formerly owned by Mrs. Clary was purchased by a developer, where he built two, I'll call it, street lots on Myrtle Street, and then the third lot is, which we call, an estate lot, which allows for, the lots are three times larger than the underlying zoning district, so it's a way to create a lot, but in overall, the trade-off of that is to have less density from a development standpoint, so it's much larger in total size. The rear portion of the lot that is before the board for a conservation restriction, there's natural heritage habitat area to the rear portion of it. When they went through the planning board permitting process back in 2018, one of the requirements was to have a conservation restriction placed on the rear portion of the lot. The, so that, so now, as we move forward, this is the last lot that the developer is developing on Myrtle Street of the three, and in order to do that, the conservation restriction needs to be in place by the occupancy permit. The developer was Pelcon Development, Walter Conti is the development company's name. He wanted to be able to have it really kind of wrapped up before he started to market the lot for a future homeowner, to be sure that he could deliver the home. So in order to do that, the conservation restriction was first submitted to my office. It went through the review process between myself, Jent, along the Conservation Agent and Town Council. The conservation restriction was sent up to the Executive Office Environmental Affairs, who also has to sign off on the conservation restriction, went through their review and through their legal department, and through that review process, the restriction came back to the town of Norfolk, and the two local, to the conservation would have to sign on it, off on this restriction, which is on their agenda for November 4th. I was before the commission in October, reviewing it, going over it, so they understand the background of it, and they were comfortable with the restriction pending final language. The intent of it, so the lot is, it's entirely an upland lot, but it's a woodland area, so there's conservation value. It's not, was not a project that required conservation approval permitting for the house lot, but there are the broader conservation values on the property, and that was the purpose of doing that. And I know you-
Hey, Rich, you should be able to share now, by the way. Go right ahead.
Oh, okay. All right. So let's, I just have to log in. So you see the, do you see the presentation on the screen?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So this, this is the lot 65, which is out highlighted in green. So if you see, there's a nice woodland to the rear portion of the lot, and I'll screen, I'll, as I go through the slide presentation, I'll zoom in, you can get a closer look, but just gives you a broader perspective. So the river is to the rear. This is part of the Charles River, Charles River watershed storage area, which I'll screen. Let me just zoom in a little bit so we can see here. Helps. So if you can see, and the Mill River is going through here. It might be a little bit hard to see, but if you can see this diagonal line here, that represents the natural heritage habitat area. So one of the things that the applicant had to do is apply to natural heritage with their proposed development to see what the impact would be on habitat related to the development project. And when they go through that process, the natural heritage makes a determination whether the development could be done to minimize impact, and then another criteria is whether there would be a regulatory taking if it prohibited the development. Because of the intent is development for a single-family home and for preservation of the site, he was granted clearance to develop this property with the estate lot. I'm gonna scroll down, actually, here, let me see. I might actually, so I'm gonna pause, so, not pause, but these are some of the conservation values that are the purpose of creating a conservation restriction with this one here. So it's all open space protection, protection of wild habitat, and the soils that are on that property itself. This plan here shows the third lot, which is Lot 3, the estate lot. This dash line, if you see where I'm going across my cursor, that portion of the lot is the one subject to the conservation restriction. One of the things that was part of the approval of the planning board is to put a split rail fence in here to create a barrier when the house is constructed, to not go further behind there, as a visual barrier, not to go back into the property. Certainly could walk around the property, but it needs to remain in its natural state. You can do general maintenance if there's trees come down of that nature, but it's really no touch essentially on that lot. We'll also include signs to the prospective buyer, let them know that there are conservation values on the back of that property, and it needs to be respected and not disturbed. The, this one here, it gives you, it's kind of representative of this red line, and then to this rear portion, just to give you an idea of what portion of the lot would be subject to the conservation restriction. So as I mentioned earlier, the, it didn't require any conservation approval from a development standpoint, so it was relatively new to the commission, but in October, I brought them up to speed, what was involved with it, they agreed with it. From that point, we got the final language back from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, which was before the Select Board tonight. We're asking, or I'm asking on behalf of the, I guess, the developer in this case, but the town overall, to have the Select Board vote to approve and sign off on this conservation restriction. What would happen if you do that? The next step would be to go to the commission to have them vote to do the same, and then after that, the signatures would be collected, and then the final conservation restriction, I would let the state know, and it'd be put on record, Norfolk Registry of Deeds, and then we would have receipt of that recording. And then if there was, so it will be under the jurisdiction for monitoring of the conservation restriction in this particular case. Just as a perspective on conservation restrictions, some can be held by- Some can be held by other entities and would, you know, like land trusts can also hold those too, in this case, this one is being held. By the town Norfolk, but there are entities that are conservation mine that can also hold. Conservation restrictions, just for the board's general knowledge. And I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see people, I guess. I could pause here if there's any particular questions. Relate to this one.
Thanks, Rich, I will toss it to Anita.
Thank you, Rich, on the surrounding land appears to be conservation land as well, who owns the conservation restriction on that land?
So there isn't, let me go back, did you see, so I'm gonna make sure. Yeah, the. This area here.
Yes.
That's. Believe it's the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. I'll double check, I'm pretty confident. The Army Corps owns that for flood storage for this Charles River.
Okay, thank you, I was curious.
Yeah. You're welcome.
CC, any questions from your perspective? Nope, none from mine either, Rich, go right ahead.
See, there's a hand, there's a hand from the audience, I don't know.
Typically, I would save the attendee questions for the end, but it sounded like you were still going and just breaking in the middle.
Well, quite honestly, I think I'm probably, I probably reached the end, I could just summarize, like I said, the. The conservation restriction went through review at the, at the staff level, went through the state, it came back. Conservation Commission is on board with the thought of holding and enforcing the conservation restriction. And, and this, this will be step one in our local process, hopefully you agree to. To sign off on this one and then the commission would on Wednesday and then we put this in, get it on record and. Have the land protected in perpetuity, so by the way, I should have mentioned that earlier, so this is a permit protection. On the land. That rides with the, with the property.
Got it, thanks, Rich. If we don't have any other questions from the board, I will open it up to anybody in attendance, please use the raise hand function, Mr. Haddad, go right ahead, sir. Mr. Haddad, I think you might be frozen, but if not, you can ask your question now?
Well, I don't think so.
There you go, go right ahead.
Okay. Rich, does this conservation restriction afford the homeowner or the property owner any tax benefits?
The tax benefit would be, you know, diminished value of the property, so it will, it will. It probably will afford them a little bit less on the tax valuation of it. I don't know what that amount would be, but. But yeah, I'm, I'm sure they'll get some reduction.
So, so I guess the question that I'm getting to is, what, what's the value to the town of losing tax revenue? For the benefit of a conservation restriction, especially in a location. Where there's probably going to be minimal, if not any, development. Why would, what's, what's the benefit to the town?
Well, I think the, I think the overall benefit is, is that permanent protection of. Of any further development down the road, so there's the conservation value of that property protecting it. So it doesn't. You know, the bylaws that we have in place, they ultimately. Could be modified down the road and this would. Perhaps, and I can't predict, but if it were to be the case, they would already be fore. Closed out from any further development of this property, so it would be literally. The conservation value would be the overriding issue, although I would say, I mean, granted, I'm not an assessor, but. I don't know. How much incremental difference it would be, it's still a large lot, has conservation restriction on it, but. I think of the. I'd hope the conservation values outweigh the. Difference of the tax value.
Well, maybe so, I guess, you know, and referring back to Ms. Mecklenburg's question about who owns the property behind it, you know, if. I mean, that's not going to be buildable, so the likelihood of, of. Of development going on in that backend, I, I don't know, is minimal, I guess, I, I don't know, so I guess. I guess I'm asking the question, I, I don't quite understand the value of going through this whole process to the, to the property owner.
Well, it wasn't, I, I mean, I probably would say on behalf of the property owner, it was really something that the town requested that they would do. So it was really, it wasn't coming from the property owner. It was part of the permitting process to the planning board that they, if, at the time, they felt that. When it came through, they wanted to have additional protection safeguard. On this piece of property because of the. Uniqueness of it from a. A resource, so they placed that condition on it, so. And the developer, when it went through the permitting process. He agreed as opposed to, you know, challenging it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed, thanks, Rich, does anybody else have a question for Rich, Blithe, or anybody that relates to our current agenda item of considering conservation restrictions?
I don't know if you want to have him talk about the enclave next, or you feel comfortable from what you learned about this project? There's two different restrictions.
No, I think that we would want to hear about the enclave as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll go, did you want to vote them separately, you don't want to vote them together, any thoughts?
I have a motion written for one, so unless anybody has an objection when we get to that point, we'll do them as one.
Okay.
Kevin, didn't Donna ask us to consider naming the road before we vote on that?
Donna did ask us about the sequence of naming the road before we vote on that, Rich, do you have any insight?
I, I do, I was just waiting until we got to this to give the board an update relative to the, so the, the road has already been named, excuse me. Which is. It's Avery and I'm trying to remember if it's Avery Way, I think, it's definitely Avery, I know. It was quite a few months ago now that actually. The, the road came before the select board to, to name it, went through the. It was actually historic commissioner was the one that suggested that name and. And the developer obliged with that name, so it is already named. So that is in place already. Might actually be on the presentation, I just show you next, by the way, we'll see. So I can share the presentation if you want and then we can. Let's take. Let's see, by any chance, do we put it on there, I guess the. Alright, well, I know it's Avery, because we went through the approval process for that earlier, it was quite a while ago, actually. So anyway, well. So the first. Slide here is a letter that the Conservation Commission was approached back in twenty nineteen by the developer. For the enclave, which for the audience is. It kind of, it's a forty B development, it bounced around between, at one point. Age restricted, then it was consideration of the market rate. And then it came back to age restricted, so it is an age restricted development fifty-five and over. And if you could, if you see from the first slide, the conservation did consider it actually almost a year ago. Before, but they, it took a period of time to be able to go through the process to finalize the plans. Similar to sixty-five Myrtle Street, there is habitat area. Associated with this property as well, and this, if you can see, these are. Long lengthy lots, but these are lots within this circle, that's the enclave itself. And then that diagonal line represents the heritage area. When it went through the, I'll just. Pan along here, this slide, just for representation, actually, you know what, I think I might just skip ahead, it might be better. So to, to take a look at this. This slide for reference. So as it went through the permitting process. The consideration similar to the last one, it went through natural heritage and they were concerned about habitat on this property. And through that state permitting process, then coming back to the town Norfolk through the forty B process. You see this gray parcel here. That actually is an open space parcel. Which also has a conservation restriction on it, which was one of the requirements in this case from natural heritage to be done, the. Zoning Board of Appeals concurred with the conservation restriction being placed on it. And so. That's why you see the conservation restriction, one. Unique aspect of this development is that if you see this dash line that. Here as I'm going from the top of the screen, north to south. There will, there is a walking path that the residents. Certainly along Village Green, and if you came to Village Green, you can go through here and you'd be able to walk. Through the woods. And they actually, there's a trail through the woods and they permitted a little footbridge to get over the wetland resource area. And then would bring you out to Juniper Lane, which then will get you over to Boardman to the school property, so that. That pathway is open to the public. Anybody can utilize that along with the residents within there, that was one. Aspect of the development that's unique, there was. Strong interest from the Village Green neighborhood to be able to have that connection from a walking standpoint, so that became part. Of the approval for the development. You, a little bit uniquely, the maintenance of the land within here, the common area will be. From the homeowners, but this will be a public road when the development's all done. Here as part of the enclave development. Similar to this, it went through the local process. Myself and Janet reviewed it, went through town council's office up to the state. In this case, it was a little bit more involvement because the developer had environmental consultant that worked with us as well. As the state on the conservation restriction. So just to give you, I know it's in your packet, public wants to take a look at it, but. It's a little hard to read on the screen, but there are. Even more listed, unique conservation values associated with this property that are being incorporated into the. Conservation restriction. And that's. Really kind of an overview essence of this particular one, I think. Since I gave you the. Similar presentation on the last one, I'll just open it up for questions at the moment.
Thanks, Rich, I'll toss it to the rest of the board, see if anybody has any additional questions for you, starting with CC. Head shake, no, Anita? Head shake, no, none from my end either. I'll open it up to anybody in attendance, if they have any questions related to the enclave conservation restriction. If you have a question, please use the raise hand function. I am seeing none, very well explained, Rich, thank you very much. So from the board's perspective, unless somebody has a objection to lumping these into one motion, that's what I would propose we do at this time. Do I have an objection to that? Couple of head shakes tells me no, so with that, I move that the board vote to execute conservation restrictions for sixty-five Myrtle Street, lot three. And land off Village Green Street and Juniper Lane, the enclave at Village Green, do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have any further discussion? I am hearing none, so we'll do a roll call vote, Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Easy Van Tyn, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is a unanimous vote, thank you so much again, Rich.
Thank you, good evening.
I'll bring us to our next item this evening, which is do please consider approval of a request by the Norfolk Community League to install a free public library on Town Hill. Blithe, would you give us some background, please?
Happy to, we were approached by the Community League a couple of weeks back, interested in. Donating a little free public library to the town. And wanted to know if that would be something that was welcome, so we, we connected them with. The library director, they talked that through and agreed that that would be a terrific thing. And needed to then work through the location, so DPW got involved. Met with Kendra Bixby, who is here tonight on the call to talk with you about this. And they chose the, together chose the location on Town Hill. Adjacent to the gazebo. It's a nice central location, it's placed in a, in a location where it will not inhibit the maintenance of Town Hill. And also is convenient, should the library be. And should there be a need for some additional books that the library can donate at times, it's right there for them. So I, I'd like to turn this over to Kendra, because I'm sure she'd like to tell you to whom this is being dedicated and a little bit more about why they're doing the projects, I think that's important. So we recommend it.
Sounds good, thank you so much, Blithe, Kendra, go right ahead, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you? Can you all hear me? Okay, good, thanks so much, Blithe, for the background, yes, we had seen the. Lending libraries over down near the Eagle Brook, there is that, it's like a flower shop and they do a few other things that they sell there and they actually. Had the lending libraries available there and when we first moved to town, we have twin boys in the Freeman Kennedy, right now, they're ten, they're in fourth grade. But when we had first come to town, we started at the HOD school and one of the first faces that they saw was Gretchen Sullivan. So we had Gretchen for a couple of years and as you know, Gretchen passed away last year. Of cancer and so we had, she had such an impact on so many of us, so we thought that it would just be so wonderful. To have this dedicated to Gretchen Sullivan and the NCL would of course be donating this to the community, I know that. You know, our family had a loss many years ago, my brother-in-law passed away suddenly and we actually have the bench. In the baseball field that's dedicated to my brother-in-law and we just know, it's, it's just so special to us that the community did that for us and. It was actually in the Norfolk Community League that did that as well and I know it's, it's so special for us, so we would love to do. This for the Sullivans and, and actually have a little plaque made as well, as soon as we, we figure out all the logistics of it. Touch base with the family and see if they would like to have something special put on there in dedication to Gretchen and all she did for the community.
That is fantastic, thank you so much, Kendra, and then for those who don't know, could you just take us through a brief overview of what a free public library is?
So they have them in several other communities and it's just, it's a post, but then it almost has like a wooden case. On top of it, it has a little latch that keeps the book safe and it has usually around two shelves. This one in particular is, is really unique because it almost looks like a house. And so it had, it's like in the shape of like a schoolhouse almost, so it, it just has, I think it's, I don't know what kind of wood exactly it's made out of, but it's probably about five. Five feet tall and when I did speak with the DPW, they agreed that they would put it at a reasonable level. So that way the children could have, you know, the access to it as well and the NCL would also be helping with the donations of the books and taking care of the books and. And maintaining the library as well.
Fantastic, thank you so much. At this point, I'll open it up to the board for any questions that they may have for Kendra or Blithe related to this agenda item, starting with CC.
I do not have any questions, I love this idea, I love every time I'm driving through a community and I see the little lending library box and sometimes they have little roofs, whatever. I really think it says a lot about the town, I don't know why I do, but I do, I think it's really cool, so that's it, that's my thought, no questions.
Thank you, CC, Anita, go right ahead.
Thank you, and I think it's amazing, having known Gretchen, I think it would make her smile to know that that was there, we should probably tuck a math game in there too with the books. Just so there's a little something that has to do with math. Just so there's a little something that has to do with math, but I think it's amazing. And thank you for doing that for our town and for her family.
Thank you, Anita. And just to echo the sentiments from everybody else, I mean, this is, it's a fantastic initiative. So thank you so much for taking upon yourselves to do this and you know, more generally, thank you for everything that Norfolk Community League does for our town. It's greatly appreciated and noted. With that being said, I will move that the board accept the gift of a free public library from the Norfolk Community League and authorize its installation on Town Hill adjacent to the gazebo. Do I hear a second?
Second. Sorry, my computer's frozen. Second.
That's okay.
Okay. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? I am seeing none. So with that, we'll take a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous votes. Thank you very much again, Kendra.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
With that, we'll move on to our next item this evening, which is to please consider a ward of a contract to Constellation Energy for the purchase of electricity for town buildings. Blake, go right ahead, please.
Uh, just one little thing to add about little republic libraries before we jump to this topic. Just to let you know, we've had two other uh, folks reach out to us. There seems to be an all sudden interest in these in town. One from an Eagle Scout and one uh, from a gentleman who just wanted to donate one. Um, so the library is talking with each of them. We want to find the right sweet spot between having them and not having too many um, in locations. So if any come to fruition where they would need be placed on town property, that's the ideal location, we will bring them back to you. So. Um, so energy, um, approximately uh, four and a half years ago, the town took advantage of um, the law to enter into a four and a half year agreement with Constellation Energy for the purchase of all the power that the town uses for all of its buildings, streetlights, pump stations, all the town accounts, if you will. Prior to that, just to give you some frame of reference, uh, when the law changed, the Mass Municipal Association saw an opportunity to find a way to kind of help its membership by running a process to select a vendor to coordinate these because they're incredibly complicated. Um, and develop a model contract so that each community didn't have to reinvent the wheel, hire a consultant to help them navigate the energy market, bid it appropriately, negotiate a contract and so on, because it's really outside of what we all do every day. And Norfolk was one of the communities took advantage of that. They signed a contract back then uh, for uh, about ten cents a kilowatt hour. And um, signed up all the accounts that the town had. Um, you might wonder why four and a half years, that seems like an odd amount, but actually to me, having done these in another community, I think it was a, an excellent move because that contract uh, ends at the end of this year. And the actually, the ideal time of year to enter into a new contract is in the fall. Um, because if you've looked at your energy bills in, for your home, you know, you might know that uh, energy rates are generally lowest in the winter. Uh, when energy usage is lower and highest in the summer when it's the highest and, and in resident, residential properties, it fluctuates. Um, Norfolk was able, and any community is to enter into a contract for a single price all year long. So they did that. Um, and the rate went up to eleven point oh one cents in January of twenty twenty because of a um, a new, um, looking through my memo, a, a new charge that the, the, the town was required, every community was required to pay. So uh, Constellation got a hold of us and say, hey, it's, you know, it's time, this contract's coming up. And the market has actually come down. And the town can lock into a new rate uh, for up to five years for what we believe is approximately nine point seven cents per kilowatt hour. Um, I say approximately because this market fluctuates every single day. It might have been nine point six nine on Friday and nine point seven on Monday and something slightly different tomorrow. So overall, the town would go from paying just over eleven cents to just about, about nine point seven or approximately a one point one point three cents per kilowatt hour less. And that equates to um, approximately a savings of thirty-five thousand dollars a year in the town's budget. Um, I say appro, again approximately because, you know, there are other factors, you know, how much energy do we need in any given year? Um, do we, uh, do we acquire any of the streetlights that need to be um, powered? Um, since this contract was entered into, we added the police station that we didn't have before, those sorts of things. So you know, I can't, I can't give you an absolute. I can just tell you based on the usage today, what that would mean. Other things that you should know about it. Um, this, don't forget, we also have the solar field that's located by the transfer station. Um, and that still, now that can, does still be continue to be a part of the equation because that produces energy that offsets our overall cost. Um, we tried to do some math to figure out what that delta would be if we're going to pay this lower rate. Based, you know, as opposed to what we receive from that, we, our best guesstimate is that the additional savings because of this lower rate would be about ten thousand dollars. So overall about forty-five thousand dollars in the contract. Whatever we lock into, we can continue to monitor the market. And so if the market, we see that the markets come down and, you know, that fifth year, it looks like it's going to be even lower. We can extend it. Lock into that even lower rate for a period of time and, and just keep doing that. So right now, I understand that MMA Constellation works with about sixty-seven other communities uh, in the state, including a couple of our neighbors. Um, and like I said, having used it in other communities myself, I think it's um, I think it's an excellent program. And um, I would recommend the town that the board approve my ability to execute that contract uh, tomorrow morning. Now, obviously if something happened overnight and the rake went through the roof, we, we would, might hold off. Uh, but we want to make sure we're getting the best, obviously want to get the best price we can for the town. So happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Blake. Uh, any questions from the board? Anita? Cece? Nope, no questions from my end either. Thank you, Blake. I'll open it up for anybody who has questions in attendance this evening. Please use the raise hand function at this time. I am seeing no hands. No furious camera waving. So with that, I will move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to execute a contract with Constellation Energy for the purchase of electricity. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Our next item this evening is to please consider naming the new street in the Lakeland Hills subdivision. Uh, this is pretty self-explanatory, Blake, but do you have anything to add?
I don't.
And this name has already been run through historical commission, uh, public safety, all those?
Yeah, the first idea was um, Man Street, but uh, public safety was, uh, recommends not being that straightforward because it sounds could sound an awful lot like Main Street if you're in the heat of a, uh, of a call. Um, so the, um, there's some background, especially from Barbara Bartholomew. And the suggestion is Thomas Mann and Circle sounded nice to go with it. So you could change it to Way or Drive or whatever the board's uh, preferences.
Very good. Thank you so much, Blake. Any questions or comments from the rest of the board? Cece? No. Anita? Nope. Very good. Anything from those in attendance this evening? Any questions or comments related to the naming of this street? I am not seeing any hands. So with that, I will move that the board name the new street in the Lakeland Hills subdivision, Thomas Mann Circle. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have any further discussion? I am hearing none. So we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that vote is unanimous. Thank you so much. Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of additional dates for Zellus Beer Company for pop-up beer and food events on Town Hill. Um, Blake, I think uh, some of this may have shifted or changed. Would you mind updating the group?
Sure. So besides the date of, of this Saturday, November seventh, um, Jeff is on the call. I can, I see him jumping on. Um, he'd like to have a date uh, later in November, no, uh, Saturday, November twenty-first uh, with a rain date of the twenty-second, if the weather isn't conducive.
So if I could just circle that back up, we're, we're going to be deciding this tonight on an event for Saturday, November seventh and an additional date on the twenty-first. Is that correct?
That request came in this morning. That's correct.
Gotcha. Uh, Jeff, I see that you're on. Anything you'd like to share with us about the proposed new date?
Uh, the only reason for the new date is because we had to cancel the event yesterday because of rather bizarre weather over the weekend.
Very good. And I know that we spoke, uh, the last time you were on Town Hill and you had expressed the disdain for the cold weather and being out there for that long amount of time. Do you have any concerns for late November for being out there for an extended period?
Uh, yes.
Well, I hope you have the uh, brick oven pizza guy there again, because uh, that seemed to be your only, your only relief.
Uh, yeah, he, yeah, he was um, very good. He's going to be there on Saturday, actually. Uh, assuming that you approve it, that is.
Yes. Um, well, again, I mean, I'll just reiterate that the events on Town Hill have been very successful from what I've heard from those who have attended. Uh, the community's been coming together. It's been done in a safe and efficient manner. Uh, I think it's been a fantastic outlet during a time where the things are kind of restricted. So thank you so much for your efforts in putting them all together.
You're welcome. I, I only had one question actually, and I, I think I know the answer, but you probably noticed or some of you probably noticed the governor made some new announcements this, today. Um, it seems by my reading of them, it doesn't affect the beer garden because it only affects private events.
From my understanding of what was shared today, I didn't perceive it as affecting the beer garden events. Uh, Blake, did you have a different interpretation?
Uh, no, I don't. I would agree because it doesn't seem to change the uh, numbers for outdoor gatherings, whether they're a beer garden or they're something else. So I think uh, on that, that premise, it should be fine. But who knows what will change in the next few weeks, if anything, hopefully not.
Unfortunately, I think, yeah, things keep changing.
And Jeff, we've never come close to uh, fifty to seventy-five people being in the area at one time, have we?
Um, uh, the first two days, we I don't think we, I think we went over fifty the first two days, maybe. The last three times, no.
Gotcha. And the cap right now, Blake, if I'm correct, is a hundred people for an outside event? Is that correct?
I think so, but I'd have to check.
I believe so, in, in, in Norfolk, because it's a low-risk community, assuming that it's
Well. That changed today, Jeff.
Oh, it did?
About that.
Yeah.
You, you know, okay, I didn't know that.
We had a large increase in our caseload, so we may be going to a red community quite quickly.
Okay, so that, I think that puts you in fifty. But don't quote.
We'll, we'll double back and check on that and confirm.
Even in the worst case scenario though, Jeff, I mean, that would just be a matter of one of the um, members of your team being at that front area to keep account of who's in there and ensure that we don't go over that number, correct?
Yeah, exactly. Yes. Yeah. I've always been ready to mitigate against that if I thought it was necessary.
Gotcha. Thank you. Uh, at this point, I'll open it up to any questions from the rest of the board. Uh, Cece, any questions from your end? No? Uh, Anita, I'm getting a head shake, no? Uh, we'll open it up to anybody in attendance. Any questions related to our current agenda item related to the Zellus Beer Company pop-up beer gardens? If you do have a question, please use the rate hand, raise hand function. I am seeing none. All right. So with that, I will move that the board vote to approve the use of Town Hill on Saturday, November seventh and was that Saturday, November twenty-first?
The second day is November twenty-first.
Was it a Saturday or Sunday?
I, I, I can answer if you wish. The uh, November seventh is a Saturday and then November the twenty-first is also a Saturday with a rain day of November the twenty-second.
Thank you. All right. So listen to that one more time. I move that the board vote to approve the use of Town Hill on Saturday, November seventh and Saturday, November twenty-first with a rain date of Sunday, November twenty-second to Zellus Beer Company and further to issue a one-day beer and wine license and entertainment license for the amplification of music for these events.
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Hadad, I see you have a hand raised. Is that in reference to the current agenda item?
Yes. Could you just include what the hours are of, of this event, just so the public knows, please?
Uh, yeah, the, the plan would be from noon, twelve P M to five P M because it gets dark earlier now. This is the time chain. So twelve to five.
Thank you.
Do we have any other further discussion? I am hearing none. So we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous vote. Thank you very much again, Jeff.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Our next item this evening is to please consider disbanding the zoning working committee, not the B one committee. Blake, any insight to share?
Yes. Uh, so I understand that there's the B one committee, um, there's some considerations being uh, talked about to adjust that one a little bit. And that, when that came up, um, I was reminded by uh, others that um, there's been some confusion in recent time about the name of that committee as well as one that was formed, I guess a number of years ago called the zoning working committee. So in your packet is very helpful, um, historical, an email with histor, history from Walter Byron from planning board uh, outlining the zoning working committee has specific tasks related to the, the possible development of Southwood Hospital a number of years ago when there was a, a company the town was working with and, and a possibility that the zoning needed to be changed. Um, that happened a while ago. There hasn't been a need to talk about it since. And so since the topic came up, we thought we'd bring it to the board and say, I think it's time that you can formally disband zoning working committee and with, and of, of course, on a separate track, the planning board can continue to talk about uh, the B one committee. So one has nothing to do with the other and just seemed like a good time to uh, sort that out.
Right. And there are no current members that are being booted from their respective roles or anything of that nature. We're just essentially doing some cleanup work.
Housekeeping.
Thanks. Thanks, Blake. Uh, open up any questions from the board, starting with Cece?
Nope, no questions.
Anita, I'm seeing a head shake, no. Open it up to anybody in attendance. Any questions related to our current agenda item? Please use the raise hand function. We are seeing none. This one's pretty straightforward. So with that, I move that the board vote to disband the zoning working committee.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Our next item this evening is to please discuss amending the fees for liquor license renewals for the year twenty twenty-one on, for on-premise establishments. Go right ahead, Blake.
So this is the time of year when our office is quite busy with renewal of all sorts of licenses, including liquor licenses. Count Victular, which are for the countervacular, which are for the sale of, of food, prepared food, and licenses that go along with that. And so it seemed like a good time to talk about this because now we all, I think, are aware what's been happening to especially the restaurant industry with limitations to how many people they can serve. As of today, limitations in how late they can serve has really taken its toll. So, you know, if this wasn't a COVID year, I would be asking the board to reconsider the amount of these licenses because I think that some of them are low compared to our, you know, neighbors and other communities. But that's not the year for this. What we wanted to just bring up to you to talk about, not necessarily decide tonight, is whether or not you would like to make some adjustment in some of these licenses to, to kind, to help out some of our businesses. And so including your packet is a list of our current license fees, the current number of establishments that hold these various licenses, and a small survey that we were able to grab from other communities who have been asking a similar question. Overall, for the various, for package stores and for restaurants, the total that we bring in and budget this year is $17,000 in licenses. And the ones that we are focused on and what we would recommend, of course, up to the board, is to focus on the establishments that have licenses for serving on-premise. From, from the survey, what we saw was that most communities are not changing the fees for liquor stores. That they're, the general consensus seems to be liquor stores are, are, are not necessarily negatively impacted. If anything, maybe people are going there more if they're not going to restaurants. But restaurants and those who serve wine and malt or wine and beer are the ones that are affected the most. The surveys all over the map from communities who are not planning to make any changes to ones that are going up to a reduction of 50% just for this one year. And then, you know, maybe those, the mass will be restored when it comes to licensing a year from now. The other thing I'll just tell you that we learned late today, it's not in your packet, is that the governor, and part of his order today, is relaxing some of the rules to renew licenses. For example, if there's a restaurant that's closed, they don't need to submit their insurance certificate when they renew. They can wait till they reopen. So a couple of minor, not minor, but some, some changes that will make it a little bit less onerous to go through the renewal process because as you probably know, if they don't renew their license, then they basically have to start all over with a new license and a whole new process, which is quite a lot to go through. And so I'm glad to see there's some adjustments to help businesses have to delay some of that extra work and cost until they, they, they're going to open again to the public. So that's a quick overview. All of the applicants have been sent out their license renewal packages. They all have to sign their applications this month in November. You don't need to decide this tonight. It can be decided at, let's say, the first meeting in December because they don't pay for these licenses until close to the end of December. So that's my overview.
Thank you, Blake. And I think I'll just add on to Blake's presentation that we had a restaurant roundtable discussion a few weeks back where we hosted restaurant owners in the area to come discuss some of the challenges that they're facing during these difficult times of restrictions and whatnot. Coming out of that meeting, we had four takeaway items that we were going to explore that could potentially provide them some relief. Of those four items, this one, evaluate the licensing fee reduction for the upcoming calendar year, may have been the only one that we have sole control over. So I would be in favor of considering a reduction for this year and, and only this year until we can reassess at a later date to be able to provide that relief. As far as the amount, looking at our survey, it looks like there was a range. Most people who executed a reduction did so between 25 and 50%. I'd be willing to hear the board's opinion as to what the scale of that would be, but I would absolutely be in favor of taking this step to be able to provide some relief. Opening up to the rest of the board for their thoughts and opinions, starting with C.C.
So I agree as to this year, excuse me, I think that you have to strike a balance between a desire to add income to the bottom line and a desire to make sure that the businesses within the town don't close for a multitude of reasons, including, you know, the long-term generation of income, but also our responsibility to all of the people in the town, including the small businesses. And so I don't necessarily have an amount either beyond the, the idea that it should be done. I don't know, Kevin, if you've had any communications relative to, you know, has a restaurant said that if it were reduced by half, that would be really helpful, you know, if there's been any sort of percentages thrown out or if it's just any help that we can get, we need. But, but my thinking is in line with yours that there needs to be something because I'm mindful of the fact, you know, we hear it often enough, why would you walk away from a stream of income? But if the business can't afford the income, then it's a penny wise and pound foolish.
So I will say that there was no defined amount that was identified during the course of discussion. But I do believe that we have Chuck Horn on the line today, and perhaps he'd be able to share some insight from his perspective.
So we did talk at that roundtable, Kevin, and we, we kind of agreed, anything of any help would be grateful. We're hurting, that's for sure. And that most of the people in the restaurant industry in Norfolk have been pretty good with helping out the town when they needed it, so. I'd be helpful, I'd be grateful for anything, honestly.
So, so I'm going to chime in again and ask if there is any sense about, or, and I know if I'm not mistaken, Blake, this is just the beginning of the I'm like, if I'm back here, I can't see, but like, nobody's, my computer's not in my sweet spot with my really crappy glasses. So I apologize. I'm trying to see Blake and whether she's nodding or not, but this is just the beginning of the conversation, correct? Like, we're not, right. So that's good because what I would want to know is, you know, generally, you know, I see if I flip over the page, the anticipated revenue, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, looks like it's 17 plus 14 plus 3. So is that 18, 7 or something like that, right? So and, but how much of that is like so counted on that if we don't get it in, you know, kittens and puppies will be, you know, sent to the gulag? Like, what's amount can, the question, I guess, that I'd want to have answered is, because of course I know that we need all of it, but, but we also need to support the businesses and, and Chuck's right, the businesses have supported us and, and and so I don't want it to be nominal, I guess. And, and so whatever it is, I want to make sure we're not inadvertently hurting the town kittens and puppies, but by the same token, I don't want it to be such a small amount that it doesn't do any good, that it really is just, you know, this is useless, basically.
No, no, it makes sense. And I think that what we're looking at here, when you talk about the total amounts on the sheet, this includes package stores, which I don't believe that we're intending to reduce at this time. Package stores, i- if nothing else, are probably doing fairly well, given the environment that we're in right now. So I think that the only thing that we'd be targeting would be on the top two lines, the on-premise alcohol for restaurants at 7,800, as well as the on-premise wine and malt for restaurants at 800 for a total of 8,600.
Okay, I got it. All right, that makes more sense. And so really, it's, it's making sure that it's a meaningful enough amount that the restaurants that have been around and that we need to continue because it's so important that they do continue, that we give them the relief that they need. And then also, I would imagine, and again, I'm just spitballing here, right, because we haven't had this conversations, that I would imagine that this might be one of the places where the fact of the monies that we've received as a, from state as a result of Corona and the anticipation that there would be fees that we would not be able to get may come into play. Like, that would be, like, that, if we're benefiting the restaurants in town, we're benefiting the town on 110 different levels. So that's it. But that's all I've got for it now, obviously, except on the 11.
If I can just jump in, I, I agree with Kevin. Your, your math is correct, 8,600 for those two lines. And generally, I mean, yes, do we count on it? But, yes, we do. But same token, we've had some other line items in our revenues that are doing well and tax collections are on, on track so far, although collection day was today. So I think that we can make this up somewhere else in the budget this year. And if these restaurants are successful, you know, meals tax still will come into the, to the town. So I wouldn't worry about that. What I would say is that so far, we cannot use CARES money for revenue replacement. We'll have to see when we get into the new calendar year whether Washington changes the rules on that, allows us to use anything we haven't used for our expenses towards revenue we've lost. I just can't answer, that's a great question. I can't answer at this point.
I, I appreciate you saying that it's a great question, but I probably, I, to be honest, I wasn't asking it that way. I should just take credit and be quiet, but I think I was more thinking in terms of the fact that the, it was my understanding that the CARES money existed in part because, sure, there were going to be expenditures that we would not have anticipated that were as a result of Corona, which may free up more of other monies that we had sort of in our spring panic, been very careful about budgeting, which this would sort of be part of that play. But I'll take credit for it, but that wasn't, I'm not, that's not me. I don't.
Anita, did you have any thoughts or opinions?
No, I agree. I, I agree in separating the restaurants from the package stores. I absolutely know that the restaurants take care of us and, and I agree strongly with C.C. that I wouldn't want it to be a token. I would want it to be a substantial gesture toward these organizations that are so important to our town. And so I think that would be an important step for us to take, a good step for us to take.
Thank you, Anita. So Blake, since we're not just trying to nail down an amount right now, is this something that we could take away for the next couple of weeks and then come to terms at our next meeting on not town meeting, the one thereafter, beginning of December?
December 1st.
Beautiful. Is that agreeable with the rest of the board?
Sorry, we did hear from a couple of the other restaurants that they couldn't necessarily come to the meeting tonight, but they all were thankful that the board was thinking about it.
I just want to say one thing to, after that roundtable discussion, maybe two to three days later, it was brought up to the Mass Restaurant Association to go to your local board. So I just want to say thanks for being proactive and being ahead of the game.
Thank you very much, Chuck, and we appreciate your insight and your perspective tonight. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next item this evening, which is to please discuss a presentation regarding the Police Station project. Blake, I know you've been working on this. Where are we right now?
So where we are is I put together a list of topic areas that, from my perspective, are important to cover, but I'm very interested in the input from the board and frankly, from the public of things that they're questioning or concerned about so that we can make sure this presentation is thorough. So I've just included that list in your packet as a place to start the conversation. And then I also thought it would be helpful if we can nail down a date that we want to do this so people can put it on their calendar and we can try to close out the, this project this, in 2020 and move on.
Yeah, I know, I know I for one would be in support of putting this behind us and looking at our path forward. I know we've all been eager to share the outcome of these ongoing discussions and mediations and whatnot. So I, I for one would be in support of doing this as soon as between our first and second meeting of December, if possible. Obviously, if that would be the case, it would have to be done in a remote format. But I do believe that that still allows us the ability to execute what needs to happen as part of this communication. So I'll, at that point, I'll open it up to the board for their thoughts and opinions related to scheduling and the outline that Blake included in the agenda, starting with Anita.
So I agree, the sooner is better than later. I think that that those dates sound fine to me. I think the outline that Blake has put together here, it's, looks good. One of the most important pieces of this, I think, is the transparency. I think the town is looking for a transparent response. And so I am not so much interested in a finger pointing as a learning, like, what did we learn from this and what can we do better and, and what steps happened? So I think that it's super important that we're being transparent in the presentation. But it, it looks like a, a, a good step of slide, set, or a series of slides.
Thank you, Anita. C.C.?
I'm also fine with the dates. And the outline, I think, also is fine. Is the outline, though, and you may have just mentioned this, but I've had, I've had some connectivity issues. Everybody freezes for a second and then unfreezes, but that's neither here nor there. Is the, is it, is this something that is going to be, because it's been posted tonight, that the people who are sort of the most interested in the transparency will have an opportunity, I'm not saying that necessarily, we say, oh, because so-and-so wants this one thing, we're definitely going to add a slide for it. But maybe there is something that we haven't thought of that when we hear of it, we think, oh, my gosh, of course, why didn't I think of that? And if that's the case, are we, you know, I think we have enough time, right, because we're talking about December, but is there some leeway, some wiggle room, whatever you want to call it, for the fact that now that we've published this overview PowerPoint, if someone says between now and X date, would you consider also exploring some other thing if that would have, you know, if that would be okay? Which is somewhat different than understanding that no matter what, when we have these meetings, there will be, you know, questions on all sorts of topics. I'm just speaking more in terms of the outline.
Absolutely. I would rather have people send me an email and say, hey, I didn't see on your outline this particular area. And, you know, if you, if you're able to cover it in the presentation, that would be great. I would welcome those. Because the goal is people get their questions answered and, and move on. I think the only thing that I would say is that I don't know that any of the members of the then building committee are going to come to the meeting and participate. So, you know, I don't know that. And so if there are questions that, you know, frankly, I came, you know, my first time to the station was the day I signed my contract. So I don't have that, you know, all the granular detail that maybe some of the, you know, resident members had. And I could try to get it, but I may not be able to as well represent it. And so that's the only thing I would, only hesitancy I have is that I'm not the founder of all knowledge. I'm certainly going to try and find it all and answer everyone's question. But I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what will happen if there's particular questions like that.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, I had envisioned us doing a similar outreach as we do for our monthly program on NCTV where we outline what the content or subjects will be and allow for people to write in with specific questions that we could consider to be addressed during the course of the show. So perhaps we could lump it into that kind of format where we say, hey, look, everybody, we're going to be bringing forward this presentation to outline the back-to-front of the Police Station project. If you have any feedback or things that you'd like to see be included, please submit them. And that will give us some runway to be able to, I mean, chase down some answers if they're out there. That, that's how I had envisioned it, Blake. I don't know if you had a different idea.
No, that's great. No, that's great.
Very good. Great idea, Cece. Thank you. So it sounds like everybody's on board for executing this around the second week of December, somewhere in there. Obviously, we'll look at dates and overlaps and all those kind of fun things to make sure we're not running up on something else. We'll get working on a posting that highlights the intent and the outline for feedback from the community. Is there anything else that we're missing that you needed, Blithe, from this discussion to be able to carve a path forward?
Nope. I intended these as 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 major topic areas. I plan to drill down on all of them. I just, those are the ones that I thought were important, but I welcome any suggestions or questions or thoughts people have.
Thanks, Blithe. So with that, I'll open it up to anybody who is in attendance this evening. If you would like to ask a question, provide some comment on the current agenda item, you are free to do so now. Please use the raise hand function. Mr. Haddad, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. With regard to this meeting, I I think I agree with all the comments that that have been said so far. And I just would like to maybe suggest that you might get a independent moderator of the meeting, so it doesn't ever come across to the public where there's anybody being defensive or not being transparent. So perhaps the attorney that did the investigations for your lawsuits, you know, who would have delved into all the details to do their evaluation, might be a very good independent moderator for the the meeting, just as a suggestion, so that it does come across as independent and transparent. Just recommendation.
No, I appreciate that. I do believe that Town Council was intending to be there. Is that who you're referencing it?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't know about having him lead the conversation, but he will definitely be there. But we can absolutely discuss a a different resource to lead the discussion.
And then I I think, Blithe, you were just recommending, but I just want to clarify, I'm I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions that night. And if you get if you get a large audience, it could become very difficult for everyone to get their say. You don't want to start debating through a Zoom meeting would be very difficult. So, you know, maybe sending in questions in advance that get then parsed out, you know, so we don't have duplications of questions. And and then everybody will feel that they they can get heard in a in a different way would be a suggestion as well.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that makes perfect sense. And I know that, you know, there may be some questions that come up during the course of the discussion that that wouldn't be able to be requested beforehand. So we'll have to leave some medium for that to be accommodated for. But for the most part, that would be a great way to encompass most of what would be coming in ahead of time. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else with questions related to our current agenda item regarding the presentation for the police station project? If you are having trouble finding the raise hand function, please just wave at your camera right now.
So just a question.
I am seeing none.
Sorry.
Sorry, go right ahead.
The questions that Paul Denver brought up, or the comments that Paul Denver brought up, is that something that you would want him to send to you directly? Or have you already incorporated those?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
One last call for anybody with any additional questions or comments related to the presentation for the police station project. I am seeing none. So with that, we'll be moving on to our next agenda item this evening, which is to please discuss website posting of board correspondence. This is the area where the board would discuss any new correspondence that came in, and if it was a potential candidate for being posted to the website, of having value for the community at large. I think we did recently receive one piece of correspondence expressing some discontent with the current operating model for town hall within the restrictions that we have in place. I think we responded to this correspondence, and the dialogue may be beneficial for others in town who may be questioning what the current procedures are for those who are looking to come into town hall and utilize some of the services within the model that we are currently operating in. So from my perspective, I would like this correspondence to be a candidate for going up on the website. I'm not sure if others on the board have any thoughts or opinions or anything that I haven't.
I think that anytime any of us thinks something should go on the website, now that we've made the and I certainly understand it, you know, if you want to run if I, the other folks on the board, this is the only way to do that. But that just sort of my general thinking is that if somebody thinks that a communication is going to be useful, somebody meaning one of the board, we've certainly made it clear that anytime you send a communication to the town, and it's not an inadvertent communication, that it could go on the website. I saw that email as well. This could only been one series of communications that's come in in a while. And I agree that there's actually, given the pandemic and everything, I think it's a good communication. I think people will find it helpful. But just generally, even if I didn't think that something was particularly germane, we've warned, admonished, advised, cajoled people that if they send it correspondence, it may go on the website. And so no matter what anybody says, if they, if another board member says they think something is has value, I'm going to agree. Just generally. But in this instance, I also agree, but generally, I.
Thank you, Cece. Anita, anything from your perspective?
No, I agree as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blithe. Anything to add?
I don't think I was copied on that particular one. So just get me a copy of that when you have a chance.
Will do.
Great, thanks.
That brings us to our next agenda item this evening, which are our town administrator updates. Go right ahead, Blithe.
A couple of things. There's a little thing called an election tomorrow. Just, you know, not a big deal, just national state ballot questions. So up to now, and I expect tomorrow, all things are going smoothly with the election. We had almost sixty sixty percent turnout as of last Thursday. And I know that more mail-in ballots have been being dropped off. But in-person voting is happening tomorrow at Freeman Kennedy for anyone who hasn't voted yet and wishes to. So please come on down. We're ready, COVID prepared for everyone. Secondly, I had let the board know that the Historical Commission was interested in installing a bench at the cemetery for a gentleman who served with the town for many years, Lowell Robinson, no relation. And they are prepared to make a donation to the town. They think the bench will cost about three thousand dollars. They are prepared to make a donation of at least a third of that. But they're interested to know, and Betsy Pine had hoped to join us tonight, to find out whether or not the board felt the town would might be interested through the budget in contributing the balance, or perhaps slightly different arrangement might be to use some town funds to challenge residents to match funds to raise the other two thousand. So maybe up to a thousand from the town if if residents donate that similar amount, just as an idea. The reason she's asking is they'd like to do this sometime next spring. And so if if there is an interest in either the town donating all of it, she'd love to know, or if the challenge idea is something you like, they can start to put the wheels in motion to alert people to it. So I told her I would bring it up. Don't need to decide tonight, but if you can get back to me with your thoughts on that, that would be great. And then lastly, the special time meeting warrant has been posted, was posted by the moderate, excuse me, by the constable. It's on our website. It's in the printer's hands, and I expect it will probably go out in the mail mid next week or so. So people will have it definitely before town meeting. We will also be putting tips up on the website of how to attend safely. But just to remind everybody, town meeting will be at the Kingville High School. Because we're still in the COVID emergency, we can have it out of town. And we've identified the Field House as the best place to do that. We understand from the school that they can socially distance over two hundred eighty people easily. They just had the PSATs there, I guess, recently, with lots of kids. So they're set up for that. It's got audio visual, it's warm, it's dry, good parking, and good ventilation. So we will, of course, get information out there, but I just wanted to put it out there early, let people know about it. So thank you.
Thanks, Blithe. I'm going to piggyback on a couple of your updates, just to add a couple of things. The first is the Field House as an option for town meeting is looking better and better with each weather forecast that comes out for the long term. I do believe that the Sunday, Monday before both have a fifty percent chance of rain right now. So going outside on the football field is the least appealing thing that I can think of from where we are right now. So I'm glad we were able to figure out that alternative option. The other thing in relation to voting, there are two big questions that have come in from people that I've heard from my perspective over and over again. The first is there are ballot questions on the bottom and back of your ballots. So if anybody who has yet to submit a ballot is watching this, please make sure to fill those out. And the other one is that, just to reiterate, the election day is tomorrow. It is at Freeman Kennedy. Voting is open from seven AM to seven PM. Because of the restriction in place, there could very well be a line. And we are expecting an even bigger turnout. I know Blithe had identified that sixty one percent of our registered voters have submitted ballots already. But, you know, just know that when you do go, there could be a line there. So we do appreciate everything that Carol and Anthony have done. We appreciate our volunteer and our paid poll workers for their efforts tomorrow. But I did want to give everybody a heads up, just in case they get there and see a few people waiting to vote. Thanks, Blithe.
You're welcome.
Our last item this evening, our second to last item this evening, is to vote some warrants that have been signed. So we do have the four listed here, and I move that the board vote, that the board approve four warrants for the period of October twentieth, twenty twenty, through October twenty seventh, twenty twenty, as printed on the agenda for this meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Bantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous vote. Thank you. Now, our last agenda item of the evening is to please consider the approval of minutes. Anita, go right ahead.
I move that the, oh, am I muted?
No, you're good.
I move that the board vote to approve the minutes of the October twenty 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 regular meeting.
Do we hear a second? Oh, second? Do we have any further discussion?
Sorry about that. I you, I let, all of a sudden, I went to go unmute and zoom, it went off the screen. I'm like, ah. But you got it. You got your second in there. Nice job, chief. Okay.
There we go. Any further discussion? We're hearing none. We'll do one more roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Bantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous as well. All right. Well, that does it for our agenda this evening. We'll toss it around one more time. Blithe, anything else? Oh, Cece, anything from your end? Anita, from you?
The the only thing that I worry about is just assuming that all the COVID numbers are from the prison. So just want to encourage everybody to be safe and make good choices and be safe out there.
Very well said. Thank you, Anita. All right. Well, that does it for our meeting this evening. We encourage everybody to have a fantastic election day tomorrow. Please get out and vote if you haven't done so already. And have a wonderful evening. We'll take one more vote. We'll do, I will motion to adjourn this meeting. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Bantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
That is unanimous. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. Thank you.